We are happy to co-host this event with AAUW and K-Man. The League of Women Voters is a non-partisan political organization and hosting candidates forums to get their positions out on issues is one of the main things that we do. So, why don't we go ahead and get started? So, I will introduce the candidates very quickly. We have eight people running for three open seats on the City Commission. Aaron Estabrook, Mark Hattasol, Caleb James, Lynda Morse, Maureen Sheahan, Mary Renee Shirck, Sarah Siders, and Vincent Tracy. So, we will open it with opening statements from the candidates and let's just start here at the beginning with Aaron and head on down.
All right, so, sound good? I'm Aaron Estabrook and I'm running for City Commission. I'm a father, husband, combat veteran, K-State graduate, former school board member. I've built statewide coalitions, defended educators, advocated for fiscal responsibility, promoted infrastructure investment, and believe in the American dream. I grew up poor, on a small farm in Dodge City, and as an adult I've always sought roles where I can serve others and help them navigate a problem or get back on their feet. I'm a listener and problem solver, and I'm a loyal believer in the underdog. My work at Job Corps the last year has inspired me and strengthened my resolve in that the station you were born into does not dictate the height of your potential. Giving up alcohol completely and not had a drink since last April, that truly has been a blessing. In July, a couple months ago, I married my best friend, Doncha McDonald. Her passion and advocacy for mental health informs and inspires me every day. I have young daughters in our elementary and preschools. They're the future and keep me grounded and humble but endlessly proud. I'm asking for your vote because I'm going to hear your concerns and fight every day to make Manhattan stronger. I believe we have opportunities in the next decade to strengthen our infrastructure, address deferred maintenance, and provide quality of place that will last a generation. Budgets are reflective of priorities and I believe we need to make sure we have our priorities centered on people, outcomes, and goals. Community safety, lower tax, property taxes, and workforce housing are key areas I want to see progress as a Commissioner.
Thank you, Aaron. Mark? Mark Hattasol.
Hello, I'm Mark Hattasol. I've been a chiropractor here in Manhattan for 35 years. I'm married with two grown daughters, the youngest one here at K-State. I started my public service over 25 years ago as a board member of UFM, and after a few years I was the treasurer for the board. A few years later, I was appointed to the Social Services Advisory Board. I live about the social services, sitting at the feet of C. Clyde Jones and Ena Stunkel. I've spent the last three years giving our churches all building project going again. As the Church Council President, Building Committee Chairman, Capitol Campaign Chairman, it has been I have taken on the responsibility of making sure that we would get a new church built, and I am going to be leaving at 3:15 today for the ribbon cutting or groundbreaking, so if I sneak out, that's why. The point about that has been that I helped to sell the vision for the church, worked with others to solve problems, and helped keep us focused through those problems to get the shared end result. I've spent my 35 years in Manhattan getting to know the people, organizations, and businesses here. While doing my door-to-door campaigning, it has been rare when I've gone more than six or seven houses without knowing the person who lives there or knowing something about them. I have had over 120 people donate to my campaign so far because they know me and they feel they can trust me to do what is right for Manhattan. You can too. I appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Mark. Caleb James.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for showing up on this Sunday. It's a lovely day outside. Big cold this morning. I'm Caleb James. I'm running for City Commission, as is everyone here, but I feel like I have to say that. I grew up a military kid. My dad did 26 years in the Army, so I graduated at Junction City High School a year early and took the same career route, joined the Army. Did eight, little over eight years in the Army. Deployed, did all the good stuff, each coast of the United States, Fort Lewis, Fort Benning. Had a great time. Met my beautiful wife, who was also in the Army. We both got out of the Army and settled down here in Manhattan. The choice was definitely the region and what made us decide Manhattan was, number one, the quality of life that we saw here. We thought this is the perfect place to raise our children. And then secondarily, MATC was here. I went and got my HVAC certification at MATC, and that's what paved the way for me to start my family and having debt with student loans. Afterwards, I continued my education, became a senior business analyst, which is what I do now. Look over contracts, look over efficiencies, and find out where you can make processes more efficient and save some money. The reason why I'm running for City Commission, number one, is property taxes have increased over the last six years, every year. Every budget cycle, it's been harder and harder for families to afford to live here. I have a high school daughter and two toddlers, a boy and a girl. And looking at finding a house that we can afford and then pay specials on and then pay property taxes on, I don't think the people with middle income have been treated fairly in the city, and I want to see some equality. I want to see the City Commission look at the budget, be responsible, not say, "We can just raise taxes and make things harder," especially the lower and middle-class families. So, that's the main reason why I'm running and asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb James. Lynda Morse.
Good afternoon. I'm Lynda Morse, and I am a current City Commissioner, seeking reelection, the only sitting Commissioner. I believe I have more to do. I think that our community is very special. We have a vibrant community. When you consider the other cities and counties in this state, we have a lot going for us. But that is built on the backs of the previous Commissioners and the courage they had to take matters in their own hands and develop economic drivers here. We are a government town, more or less, with mostly Fort Riley and K-State and soon NBAF and the related contracts. Agriculture is the area that we really can't control, and it's right now, there's a downturn, and even they are struggling. Our community's struggling with the sales tax we receive. It's flatlined, but we were able to keep our property taxes to a minimum here, and that's a good thing. We don't raise it very much, ever. Other units of government have contributed to a rise that you'll see on your taxes later this year when you get your statement, but it is some of the things, well, I look at the sales tax increases that we have and even the bond issue for the school district as being dependent upon the ballot initiatives and the citizens in this community that vote to do those things. And that's the only way we have really grown here. It's important that we continue on. I'll stop for now.
More, Maureen? Thank you, Lynda. Now we have Maureen Sheahan. And would you, yes, speak thoroughly into the microphone, please? Thank you.
I will try. Not used to speaking into a microphone. Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here. I'm front of myself, so I don't have to lean over. I'm Maureen Sheahan. I'm running for City Commission. I grew up in a really small town in north-central Kansas. I came to the big city of Manhattan when I was 18, 40 years ago, to go to K-State, and I've basically been here ever since. I graduated from K-State with a degree in biochemistry, started a career at K-State, got married, had kids, raised my children here. They're now grown. I have three children. They have families of their own. I have six grandchildren. Now that I have more time to myself, I have been active in a number of things around town such as the Coalition for Equal Justice. I'm a board member on the Wonder Workshop, and I volunteer there as frequently as I can or am, as am needed. My goal as a City Commissioner would be to help the city to move forward in a way that's not going to strain people's budgets. We need, yes, we need to grow in the higher income ranges, but what about the janitors and the secretaries and the people that make your food? Most people need to be able to live here also in a way that, and lead a life that is dignified, so we need to look for ways that we can keep Manhattan affordable while still moving forward. That would be my goal as a Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Now we have Mary Renee Shirck.
Good afternoon. I'm Mary Renee Shirck. I've lived in town for about 25 years. This microphone is not very unfamiliar to me as I have been a media professional, working for newspapers and radio. I've also appeared on stage and emceed a number of events around town, including Rocky Horror Picture Show. I've also emceed the St. Patrick's Day Parade and a number of events. And what that experience has given me is I've been able to interact with literally thousands of people in Manhattan from all different socioeconomic places, from all different positions in town, and what I found out is a lot of them don't feel represented. They feel like they don't belong to Rotary or Optimist, or they don't have time to serve on a lot of boards, and they look at City Commission and they don't see anyone there who knows what we like to call as "the struggle." I came here as a young, single mom. I went to college. I got a degree. I got married. We did what we were supposed to do and moved to Olathe and bought a big house on a cul-de-sac. And I was there 18 months and hated every second of it. And so 18 months later, we packed up and made the drive over the bridge, and as soon as we hit that bridge into town, we could feel it, how much we love this town. My jobs have been to be a cheerleader for this town, and it has enabled me to meet a lot of people and to really hear the struggles that they have. The reason that my husband and I now are very successful, own a home, are because we had fabulous landlords and really supportive and understanding employers, as well as a lot of other services here in Manhattan that enabled us to rise up. My husband works for PayPal. He works here three weeks a month and in Manhattan, New York, one week a month. We are the people you talk about when you say they could live anywhere in the country, and we choose to stay here. I'm running so that we can have the things here that keep people like me here and that keep townies here. I think we focus too much on drawing folks into town and not enough about supporting the people that are here, that, as George Bailey says, "Do most the living and breathing and dying in this town." So I'm here to represent townies. I'm Mary Renee Smith. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you, Mary Renee. Sarah Siders.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for being here. Appreciate your presence and your concern about things in the community. I have lived here in Manhattan for about 16 years. I went to Kansas State and moved here in 2002. After I graduated, I spent one very wrong year, similar to Mary Renee in Lawrence, and I hightailed it back there as soon as I could. And I've been here ever since. My husband and I passed our church together downtown, and we have two kiddos that we live in with, in the Northview neighborhood. We bought our house about 10 years ago, and we have made Manhattan our home. And I think there's a lot of people up here who would say the same thing, that we discovered that Manhattan was maybe a great place to attend school, but there was something else that drew us here, where we said, "Wow, this is a place that I can call home." And I feel that as a young professional and as an aging millennial, if that's a thing, I have something to offer because we are wanting to attract some of these young professionals. We use this phrase all the time, "Attract and retain young professionals," in many of our communications as we think about the future of our city, and I think that's really important. But we need to know who those people are. I have made myself a student of millennials and Generation Z in terms of understanding their habits and the things that they're attracted to and what kinds of cities in the world are magnetic to those people. And I think that when we're looking at the future of our city and sustainability, how do we get out from being on the roller coaster of what the public sector, Fort Riley, Kansas State are doing? We want to have something that's a little bit more stable, and I think expanding our private sector and promoting prosperity by attracting our young workforce and making this a competitive community for them, and therefore bringing business dollars in from the outside will be very effective in long-term sustainability and prosperity. So I'd appreciate your vote in November as you consider these things.
Thank you, Sarah. Vincent Tracy.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for showing up. My name is Vincent Tracy, and I'm a candidate for the Manhattan City Commission. I first came here in 1975, courtesy of the United States Army. Was reassigned around the world, met my wife in Korea, brought her back here to Manhattan area. After living on the installation for a while, we said, "Hey, Manhattan's a much better place to live. Let's go get ourselves a home." So in '84, we bought one, and the Army in its infinite wisdom immediately assigned us to Germany. So we became absentee landlords, rented out our home while we were gone, and experienced all those great things that happened to landlords. When it came time to retire, we decided, "We like Manhattan so much, we'll come back and we'll retire there." We did that just in time for the 1993 flood. We live in the Northview area on Knoxbury Drive. Had a little bit experience with water. Nonetheless, after retiring from the Army with various police positions, I became a bus driver mechanic for USD 383, a security guard at Job Corps, worked for a year as a corrections officer with Pato-otto in County, was a customer service representative for the Flint Hills Internet out of Westlue before it folded, and worked various other positions. I'm currently with the U.S. Department of Agriculture on College Avenue. I'm an IT specialist, and I'm helping to ramp up the NBAF personnel. I'm running to try and make Manhattan those things that we were told when we were getting ready to buy our place. This was supposed to be a place for people to be able to retire to. Property taxes and sales taxes are not making that very viable. I want to work to make sure that our property taxes don't go up any more than absolutely necessary. We can't stop it. And if sales taxes must go through, that we have them for policies and projects that citizens support. Thank you.
Thank you, Vincent Tracy. So, onto our first question. We will start with three questions from the League of Women Voters, and you all should have got a note card as you came in. If you have questions, please write them on the cards. Hold them up. Someone will kind of get them from you. And after we go through the league questions, we will go through a few of the questions from the audience. So I'm going to just continue going down the table as we have you guys in alphabetical order. So Aaron, you get to go first. What are the three biggest issues you see for Manhattan, and how would you fund these?
Three biggest issues? So I think that we have, one would be workforce housing. Funding that through private and contributable, private donations, but also a lot of the future projects may depend on the sales tax question. If we have revenue in there to do projects, then that would be where I'd like to dedicate some funds and have participatory budgeting through that process to get the community's input. Second, maybe really, there is no order on these three. Important is flood mitigation, the levy, making sure the levy is taken care of. There's one point, it's about a $10 to $15 million, it changes depending on who you ask, investment that the city needs to do for the levy, and that would be our part. The federal Army Corps has come up with funds to do their part. That's going to come out of something. It can either be from the sales tax, or it can be if we make cuts, but we really need to do that. There's $10 to $15 million protecting 1.2 billion in assets, in homes, in people's lives, livelihoods, our water system. So those two, and the third is just kind of a simple incrementally trying to alleviate the pressure of the property tax, find ways to bring that down slow or maintain a flat property tax so we can keep what we have and maintain our strong internal structure.
All right. Thank you, Aaron. And I should have mentioned, and this is for our audience up there and our radio audience, each candidate gets a minute and a half to answer their questions, so. Mark Hattasol.
Some of the biggest issues right now are the Wildcat Creek flooding, and part of the, I think the solution to this, and we talked about it the other night, is going to be retention ponds upriver to the west of town here, and the county commission is taking a look at that, and that's really got to be a solution that they have to be the drivers of. Because Manhattan's in the county, the Manhattan taxpayers will have to pay for whatever solution we come up with, but the solution is not going to be found in the city limits of Manhattan because there's no place for any mitigation. And I'm not sure how we're going to pay for it. We either need to start trying to solve it or stop acting like we're going to solve it because there hasn't been really any forward pressure to stop the flooding, just to get the houses bought up and stuff. Secondly, I think one of the things is that it's too hard to open up and start and build new businesses and stuff in Manhattan. We noticed with the Brahms store out on the west side of town, they wanted to put up 11 signs, all of our ordinances say you can only have like four, and so now that thing is stopped. It's like, we need to give business room to succeed. If they think they need 11 signs, let them have 11 signs, get them open, get them in business, and then hopefully they can take one or two down after a while. But we're trying to get this new church built. We stumbled into all kinds of red tape that drove up the cost of the building and the length of time it took to get it built. The third thing is that we need to attract more. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Caleb James, same question.
Okay. Issue number one is property taxes are too high. You don't fund that. Stop raising taxes. Second issue I have is fixing the levy of Wildcat Creek flooding. Need to build the detention ponds up north. We need to work with the Army Corps and the county to figure out how that's going to get paid for. Bottom line is it needs to happen. My wife and I lost both of our vehicles and everything that we owned in the last September when it flooded. So it's a problem that needs a resolution sooner than later, and we need to go out and work at that. The third thing is equity. We need to make sure that this is a place where everyone feels included. The only community center that didn't receive funding was the Douglas Center. That was the center that was founded because black soldiers couldn't go anywhere that white soldiers could, so they had to find a separate pool, a separate community center. And I think it sends the wrong message when our commission funds two other community centers but leaves that one up to a coin toss or if you decide to pass the sales tax. Whether that was their intent or not, we need to understand that this sends a message to the people of our community. I've had multiple people come up to me and say, "Why is it the brown community that never gets anything?" The wrong perception. We had the opportunity to fund it through economic development funds. We turned that down. We passed the buck. We're sending the wrong message. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Lynda Morse.
The three biggest issues I see are, I agree about affordable housing. I think we have to do some creative things. There's a group here in the community working on some solutions, and one of the things that they've been talking about that strikes a chord with me is called a housing trust fund, to help start up houses. And it would start small, but it's something that Lawrence has had a great deal of success, and they have to start with some capital. I'd be willing to contribute $100,000 or $200,000 for economic development just to get it started, but the whole idea is that it is also privately supported, but it has to have a start. And so that's one idea that has come forward. But we've been wrestling with affordable housing for a long time, and so we have to push hard enough to get something done. The other, I agree about flood mitigation, and I'm concerned about the Blue River and Wildcat Creek, and I want us to start building higher than we have been. You know, every time we move the mark a little bit higher, a flood comes along and knocks that level down. So we have to do it in a better way than we've been doing it. Too many people are being hurt by it, and it's our responsibility to do it. And the third thing is, the levy is about flooding also, and that's major, and I'm just going to.
Thank you, Lynda. Maureen Sheahan, and I'm sorry, I'm going to repeat the question just again for our audience and for our radio audience. So the question is, what are the three biggest issues you see for Manhattan, and how would you fund these?
Three biggest issues, I think, well, primarily it starts with infrastructure. The rains this summer have shown us repeatedly that we need to do something. There's three sinkholes. There's been, I can't count how many times, sewers have collapsed, water mains have broken. Our infrastructure is aging. Maintenance has been deferred, and we need to address that sooner rather than later. We can't just keep pushing, passing the buck on that. When I was at a water conference a couple months ago, one of the comments that I heard was, "We knew that the levy didn't perform as it was intended in '93." That's 26 years. We've had 26 years to address the levy, and now suddenly we've had another flood and, "Oh, we should address the levy." So we need not to keep passing the buck on issues like that. So really, infrastructure, infrastructure, and housing and infrastructure are my four. How do we fund them? I'm not entirely sure. We need to look for money from federal money, federal dollars anywhere we can get it, state dollars anywhere we can get it. If we have to increase taxes locally, we need to do that with a lot of thought, and with any dollar that we get, we need to really consider hard whether the project that it's going for is going to help the city or not.
Thank you, Maureen. Mary Renee Shirck.
My number one issue is civil engagement and representation, and one of the things that Lynda mentioned is one of the reasons that that is important. Recently, a number of groups around Manhattan have gotten together and been able to propose some really interesting ideas that come from the people. We shouldn't just expect the City Commission or the City planners to always have the best ideas or to always know what's best for every neighborhood. Civil engagement is very important. For me, some of it, it's about signage. Over on Juliette, when they're redoing the brick, perhaps a sign that says, "Who paid for that? What the project is and when it will be done?" Instead of driving down the street and cussing about more construction, you get to be proud that we're doing something and you get to see where your money is going. Again, that civil engagement means that when we're talking about taxes and planning for the future, people can see where their money went and are maybe more likely to invest in other things in the city if they can see where it's going. We voted on the school tax last year. They won't start construction until next year. I guarantee I'll have to remind myself, "I voted for this, I voted for this," as we have construction going on. Again, for me, civil engagement, representation, which leads into taxes. I think before we spend any more money, we need to stop and take a breath and think about what we want Manhattan to look like in the future. And for me, that's also an issue of transportation. As we all get older, we're not going to be able to drive. We're going to need to depend more on public transportation, on biking, on walking. That's also how you make Manhattan more affordable, are those types of services. And again, that goes back to asking the people what they think will work best for them and how best to spend their money.
Thank you, Mary Renee. Sarah Siders.
Thank you. I believe that three of the key issues that are facing Manhattan really all go back to our need for sustainability, our need to be able to be more established and grounded through the various ways of change that happen, and especially with what I feel like is accelerated change in nearly every area of human existence. I think three things that would really be helpful would be to address housing for our workforce and to provide different variations of housing through development, through making use of our existing infrastructure. We're always talking about everything from road maintenance to, you know, all the pot holes we're driving into and flood mitigation. I think that relates also with climate change, which is something that's facing the entire world right now, but I think it's something we really need to take into consideration is that our weather is acting erratically, and it's causing a lot of pressure to the current infrastructure, and I'd like to see us use the existing infrastructure better. I think that Generation Z is very interested in moving to cities that care about that. And so when we're looking at housing development, we're looking at creating live work and play spaces that are also ecologically friendly. I think that's important, and along with that, I think a final thing would be just developing, investing in community pride. Anything that we do to clean up our streets, invest in agribill and things like that are really going to make a difference in showing people that we're all proud to live here.
Thank you, Sarah. Vincent Tracy.
First and foremost, I want us to work on safety issues that impact the whole city, not just certain segments. The levies, both on Blue River, possibly some on Wildcat Creek, working with the other government agencies to try and get those retention ponds built so that we can reduce the amount of flooding that happens. I'd also like to see us make it more affordable for people to come here. Maybe we can do some kind of property tax abatement using some of the funds that are already available to us. I'd also like to see us make it more enjoyable for people to do the things they need to do, not necessarily things people or certain special interest groups want to do. We have a big problem with health. We have a big problem with health and food deserts. If you've read the local newspaper, Hy-Vee is no longer going to be open 24 hours, limiting when people getting off late at night can be able to go do their grocery shopping. We need to do better, and we need to make the city more efficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy. So for the second question from the leak, we have, two issues have been cited by studies as lacking sufficient support in Manhattan. They are mental health and childcare. Do you agree that these areas are of primary importance? And if so, how would you address these needs? If not, what other two issues are more important, and how would you address those needs? Aaron.
I'm starting with me.
We're going to start with you again.
All right. Awesome. Mental health is extremely important to me and my family. My wife and I serve on the NAMI board, and NAMI is the National Alliance of Mental Illness. I have been through my own struggles as a soldier transitioning out. And in the military, I oversaw as an NCO some situations that have really never left me in the sense of suicides on post. That was at Fort Lewis, not at Fort Riley. But you always want to know how you can do more, and I think community members are stepping up. There's always ways to signify that you matter. There's bracelets, there's signs around town. We have more and more students and young people in our community and soldiers at risk, and you combine alcohol or something else or a financial situation with housing affordability, and you become at very high risk for suicides and severe mental illness taking root. So that is always going to be at the forefront for me. I'm the vice president for NAMI Kansas. And then the other issue, childcare. It's ridiculously expensive to work and put your children through childcare in a place that provides anything that looks like learning in our community. And I don't know that the city commission can address that, but as a young family, I would be reflective. I think we need young families on our commission if we're going to attract more young families to have that conversation, to talk about those obstacles. I will be an advocate for both those issues.
All right. Thank you, Aaron. Mark Hassel.
I'll start with childcare because I know a little bit about that because our church is trying to put an early learning center childcare facility in our new building out there, and we thought we had it through the code services people okay, and then suddenly the health department childcare licensing people got ahold of it and another $30,000 later and what seems like unreasonable requests. There's enough regulations in place 10 years ago to keep kids safe in facilities. They need to stop imagining things that could happen and making people plan for them. I had a patient last week who's a childcare provider in their house, and she said three of her friends who did childcare in her house have quit in the last year because the regulations are getting too hard to comply with or too expensive. And that is why institutional childcare is so expensive because building a new building, crash ours, the one that Christian Church is building out there, they make it too expensive to start with, and then you have to charge a lot more. Mental health care, obviously that's a big problem. When they started turning people loose on the streets instead of keeping them in facilities was a terrible idea. I don't really know much about it. I'm glad that Pawnee Mental Health got their new facility over there to start trying to address some parts of that, having the police department do, having their officers trained. That's a good step, too. We just, there has to be more of a focus on that somehow, and there needs to be cooperation between the state and the city.
Thank you, Mark. Caleb James.
So for mental health, there's definitely a shortage of mental health professionals. That's something, I think both of these are something that the commission can help to address. When we're talking about using economic development funds and using chamber resources to bring businesses and attract businesses in, I think one thing that we can do, the chamber just came before the city commission asking for additional funding, but the commission said, can you prove return on investment? I think one of the ways the chamber can do that is for the commission to give them the task of bringing in a childcare facility and to have a price range that they will be willing to provide these services that is affordable, and then also a wage floor where we know that the people working there will have living wages. That's a way for the chamber to say, here's return on investment. When you give us money, we can positively return on that. And it is also a way for us to say, you know what? We're going to address some of the issues that our people are having that they can't necessarily solve by themselves. In that same manner, we want to figure out a way to get more mental health professionals to stay here. I know a lot of, being a veteran, I know a lot of people who worked on Fort Riley, and they left because it was too expensive to live in Manhattan, and they didn't want to live in Junction City, and they could get a government job pretty much anywhere, so they went ahead and hightailed it down here, went down to Texas where there's no state taxes. We can't do anything about that, but we can make Manhattan more affordable for the professionals we're trying to attract.
Thank you, Caleb. Lynda Morse.
Yes. Both of those issues are very important to this community, and we haven't been able to solve them. Mental health has been a state issue for a long time, and we've watched as the state has continued to reduce money to the mental hospitals, even closing them, decertifying them from the Center for Medicare Services. Those are tragedy things, and our community has suffered. More recently, Pawnee Mental Health and our community actually worked hard. Yusha Reddy was the lead person for us, and when I was mayor, I said, Yusha, there's no way I can come up to speed on what you've been working on. You call me when you want me, and I'll be there to support this. Mental health is critical. We did fund two co-responders, and they are on call. They are housed at Pawnee, employed by Pawnee, and are on call by the Riley County Police Department anytime they want them, whether it's in the jail or at a site. There's more, but childcare has been a problem we have not been able to solve since I've come here. I've lived here 40 years, and it's expensive. And we see families making decisions that one spouse won't work because childcare will take all of their salary. We don't have all high-paying jobs here, and so there are families that are disadvantaged by childcare, and we want quality. I love the K-State Center, for example. It's the premier one here locally. Thank you.
I'm going to repeat the question. So again, the question is, two issues have been cited by studies as lacking sufficient support in Manhattan. They are mental health and childcare. Do you agree these areas are of primary importance? If so, how would you address these needs? And if not, what other two issues are more important, and how would you address those needs? Maureen Shahean.
Yes, these are both very important. We do have a fair number of mental health professionals, but it's really expensive to go to a private mental health professional. So finding ways to help people pay for that, I don't know how to do that, but I would be really willing to listen to any kind of ideas. I believe that Pawnee Mental Health has been a valuable, is a valuable asset to the community, and I would look for ways to expand their services. Really, anything that can bring the prices down to allow people to seek the health treatment that they need. Mental health is just another facet of health overall, and if you can't afford it, it's going to wear on your health. So yes, we need to do something. Childcare, I was a single parent of three toddlers. I know the struggle. It's nearly impossible to pay for childcare for three little ones and housing and food and et cetera. So anything that we could do to bring in a larger childcare facility mirrored, something mirrored off the one at K-State, I would be willing to work on that.
Thank you, Maureen. Mary Renee Schur.
I think if we could find a way to solve mental health issues, we could run for president or emperor of the world or something. But I think it's no secret that mental health is also affected by your access to food, your access to safe housing, about feeling singled out or isolated, about feeling helpless and like you're not heard. So it comes back to me, to letting people know that the city cares, to giving them vehicles to do that. The co-responder program through Riley County Police Department, I actually listen to the scanner for fun because I'm that kind of geek, and I have heard them respond and really be able to de-escalate situations and help families on what is the worst day of their lives. And if that's what we can do in the beginning, then that helps a lot. As far as other mental health, for me, it comes to an overall looking at how do we make Manhattan as less stressful as possible and make people feel connected to other people in their neighborhood and their surroundings. Childcare, I have four children. I was a foster parent for a while, had 10 kids one time over Christmas break, and Mark, I'm glad that the kids at your childcare are going to be safe and that your childcare is following the regulations. I know sometimes those regulations seem difficult. As a foster family, they inspect your house, and let me tell you, the things they look at are very particular, and it's important to keep children safe. The reason that K-State provides such amazing childcare, all the folks there have degrees or have training or are moving on with training to provide childcare. The way we make childcare more affordable is by giving parents the ability not to have to work full-time jobs or be able to work more flexible so they have the choice to stay home and a choice on who provides childcare for their children.
Thank you, Mary Renee. Sarah Siders.
Yes, I also agree here with everyone. This is obviously from the, I think, reflecting the 2015 Manhattan Community Needs Assessment, and childcare and mental health really did come up high on the needs, the felt needs of our community. I think those are just needs across the nation. And so whenever we're seeing, you know, a problem that's a pattern, not just for us locally, but it's also something that's occurring in other communities, I like to borrow from other cities. I like to think about, okay, who else is doing this well? Let's not reinvent the wheel. I've done a little bit of research on this, specifically thinking about childcare, and I do think that there is a certain level of red tape. I was a foster home social worker and was part of, you know, keeping foster homes licensed, and so I know about the, how difficult that licensing process can be for daycares as well. But I think that we can be even more creative, thinking about onsite daycares in worksplaces or also in senior homes. There's things that some people are doing in other communities that I love. As far as mental health, I applaud the collaboration between Pawnee and RCPD and the Voluntary Stabilization Center that we've recently implemented here. I think that's really important, and as a mental health therapist myself, I see that we're constantly on a wait list. I think there's more that we can do to be here for our people and to provide people with support beyond just therapy, addressing poverty, housing, and transportation as well.
Thank you, Sarah. Vincent Tracy.
I agree that the mental care and childcare are important issues to our community. Personally, the mental care is important to me. I lost my wife to cancer two years ago, and I require weekly counseling, trying to adjust to the new normal. It's not easy, and we don't have a lot of available mental health people who will come out and assist with this. We need to work on that. As far as childcare goes, I had a neighborhood childcare provider two houses down from me. They changed the regulations to the point that her house couldn't possibly meet those regulations. So she opened a new business on East Highway 24. The city annexed that property, and she was right back to those regulations keeping her from being able to provide those services. We need to relook at what those regulations are. Do they really meet a need for safety of the children? Some of them having safety locks on the upper cabinets of the kitchen. Nonetheless, we need to do better with what we have and work to make it safer for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And the third question from the leak is, do you see the local government as representative of the community at large? If so, how do you plan to support and enhance the citizen engagement? And if not, what would you suggest to make local government more inclusive? So Aaron, you're on the hot seat again.
Right. So the local government, I don't see it as reflective in the sense, and that's one reason why I am running. As I mentioned earlier, I would, this community aims to attract not just retirees but also young families, and yet we don't have people on our commission that have children in our school system. And I think that those struggles we just talked about, one of the best things that we have going for us in this community is our school system. I'm biased that I served on the school board, but the problems that involve childcare and affordability are things that are being tackled by USD 383 in the early learning communities, and that partnership is essential. And I see that, bringing that knowledge onto the commission is something that is in need. Citizen engagement, I think that we could have more transparency in the sense of promoting different times and availability for meetings, different platforms. It's always a struggle to balance that because I know when we do offer the commission meetings on Facebook Live, there might be seven people or two people, and I might be one. Sometimes Jared McKee's on there, and he's at the meeting, so I think we have to get people to want to be involved, and that means reaching out and giving opportunities. It's great to have eight people running. We'll have eight ambassadors for our city on issues, I think.
Thank you. Mark.
I think the big problem is apathy. As I've gone door to door, people's like, oh, there's an election coming up? It's like, it's November, people. There's going to be an election every year. So it's amazing that how many people just don't pay attention enough. And everybody's busy, and a lot of the people realize they probably aren't going to make much of a difference with their vote, but every vote counts. As far as is it representative? I don't know. We've got three commissioners from the west side of town, one from your side of town, two, and so that's, it's spread out. I don't know if maybe trying to do precincts or zones or have, instead of everybody being at large, it might be a good idea to try to get, divide the city up into five locations and have people run from each one so that there's better geographical representation, which might make for better socioeconomic representation also. But we've got to somehow address apathy. You can hold a gun to somebody's head and get them to register to vote, but you still can't make them show up on Election Day. But the thing is, when people get a passion for something, they'll show up. I just don't think people put a high enough priority. They want to complain about things, but when push comes to shove, it's like, well, I can't, I don't want to come down there Tuesday night and show my face and maybe have people know that I have an opinion about something. And so that's, I think, people need to stand up if they've got an issue. They will listen to them if you'll just show up.
Thank you, Mark. Caleb James.
Absolutely not. I don't think the local government is representative of the population for multiple reasons. One reason being is elected representatives aren't keeping their word. They say they're going to run and do everything they can to make housing affordable, and then they raise taxes six years in a row. I don't see how you're helping people afford the place they live when you're making it more expensive every year. And that's one reason. Number two, something as culturally insensitive as not funding the Douglas Center. That whole brown community, when I went out there to pass out handouts and door hangers, everyone was telling me, well, I guess we'll see. Maybe we'll get something. I don't think it's going to happen. They don't care about us. That's the perception. You want to know why they're not voting? They voted people in who said they believe in equality, and those same people didn't care about them when it was time. That's why we're not represented. Why we're not represented, that's why it's not equal, because you're electing people over and over again who promise you equality, promise you affordable housing, and do nothing about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Lynda Morse.
I am the first commissioner elected from the Northview area. I've even dug into that a bit. I think that's important, and Jared McKee moved out to Northview two years ago. It's not Northview itself that's that important, but it's the idea that finally, after all, we've had commissioners from the central part of town and the west side of town, never Northview. I have been an advocate for the Northview area, but I believe as a commissioner, I am an advocate also for the entire city, and that's so important. I don't want to be arguing with another commissioner about, well, you got a road last year, I want a road this year, kind of thinking. We have had good balance here. I am on record as supporting the Douglas Center, and I will help build it at the first opportunity. We need to identify some funding, and that's what this 3.3 cent, a third of a cent sales tax is about, are those things that we can't fund otherwise, and we won't get them otherwise if we don't pass that. So I encourage you to do that. Participatory, we need people to come to meetings. People, I hear people complain that, well... People, I hear people complain that, well, our neighborhood didn't get a say in this, but you know what? Nobody came to the city commission when we were in our budget session, five different meetings. And it's not, I understand not wanting to sit down there for hours. I sit down there for hours.
Thank you, Linda. I'm going to repeat the question again. Do you see the local government as representative of the community at large? If so, how do you plan to support and/or enhance citizen engagement? And if not, what would you suggest to make local government more inclusive? Maureen Chahan.
I live on the south side of town. I live in a neighborhood that is underserved. We call it SOPO for South Point. We have, in my neighborhood, nine years lower life expectancy than across 17th Street and up the hill. Ten years if you go one district farther than that. A big part of that is the fact that the income in my neighborhood is about a third of what it is in the neighborhood just next. So representation does matter. These are the people that I live with. These are the people that I work with. These are the things that I've been passionate about, the Coalition for Equal Justice, with helping with the Douglas Center and helping with the Wonder Workshop. So I think I would be representative. Citizen engagement, that's something we really need to work on. I'm really impressed with the Northview Rising Group and depending on how things go in November, I'm going to try to work on getting a SOPO neighborhood organization going so that our voices are heard more distinctly.
Thank you, Maureen. Mary Renee Shirk.
So I'm going to get real here. Representation matters and I don't think the city commission is representative of the city and running for this office has made it even clearer that it isn't. I was told I need to raise between $8,000 and $14,000 and I should ask all my friends for checks for $100 or $200 or $500. The people I represent don't have that kind of money. Most people in Manhattan don't have $100 or $200 or $500 and it isn't that they don't believe in the message, it's that they don't have it. They're not coming to meetings at 7:00 PM because there are students who have class all day and wait tables at Olive Garden in the evening and then don't have Ata Bus to get them home. So they can't go to the meetings to tell you they don't have Ata Bus because they're at work or because both parents work and 7:00 PM is when you bathe and wrestle the kids to get them in bed. Also, that broadcast has a horrible hum that drives me crazy because I watch city commission meetings from home so I can yell back at the screen when it's appropriate. So representation matters and part of this process is the reason we don't have it. A lot of the reason I'm running is because I have been poor in this town and now I have the privilege of the time and the money to be able to run to represent those people. I feel like we've set up a system where we have shut out the people we want to represent. And until we make this system easier, until we realize that not everybody can go to a meeting at the exact same time, until we realize that if we want to represent a small town, we have to make the barrier to becoming city commissioner lower and make sure everyone feels included, we're not going to have representation.
Thank you, Mary Renee. Sarah Siders.
Yes, when I listen to this question, I hear that there's two points here. There's representation and then there's engagement. I think the city is actually doing a really stellar effort in improving programs and initiatives for engagement, everything from planning at Pines where you can go get a beer with Chad Bungier and talk about planning on a weekly basis, I believe. That's a great idea. Northview Rising, we have, we have Neighborhood, MHK. And there's a lot of different tools that are being implemented to engage with citizens in unique and creative ways. So we're not just limited to showing up on a Tuesday night to a city commission meeting. That being said, as far as representation, I think that we can do better to represent the whole of our community. And we know that people who are marginalized, who have less income, who are minority populations are just not going to be represented. And we have to be very intentional about asking for their presence and their voice. Minority representation does not happen by accident and must be intentional. So I think that things like participatory budgeting, where a portion of money is set aside for people in a neighborhood or a group to decide how the money is spent is one way that we could consider engaging with people. And I also think that we have a growing Spanish population, but none of our city communication on social media or website is available in Spanish. And I think if we had that translated, that would be very helpful.
Thank you, Sarah. Vincent Tracy.
Like everyone else, I'm not exactly sure that our local government, and in this case the city commission, because we also have the school district and several other agencies, is totally representative. But I do believe that some of our commissioners have been trying. It used to be the meetings were held and nobody knew what was going on because it wasn't being broadcast anywhere. Some improvements were made. More improvements are possible. We have to get out and get to those people who have got a more diverse background. My wife was Korean. She had a difficult time trying to follow along with the television because we talk too fast. And it's hard for people who don't have English as a first language to be able to translate it and understand what's going on. But it's something that we have to work on. And we can't always say we don't get enough participation. As was mentioned, really a bad time to have that meeting, but it fits with everybody else's busy schedules. I have to not attend fraternity meetings in order to go to the city commission and if elected, to stay at those meetings for as long as it takes.
Thank you, Vincent. Okay, now we are going on to questions that you generated from the audience. So the first one is, what is your definition of economic development and what is the city commission's role in keeping our community economically viable? Can you repeat that? What is your definition of economic development and what is the city commission's role in keeping our community economically viable? Erin.
I get the benefit of going first and everyone's going to pick apart my definition. So I agree with everything they say, too. Economic development is a tricky word and what it boils down to is we have, I think the economic development tax that was passed is sunsetting in the near future. And so we'll be asked to define this again as a community. What do we want, do we want to invest as economic development? And what do we want economic development to mean? In the very general sense, it should mean jobs and it should mean generating revenue into our community. My heart is in not necessarily taking, looking to the outside to generate economic development. I think we have the talent, we have the tools, we've had a long period of growth and we need to look at ways we can invest and shore up what we have here. I kind of think and joke that this is, in my mind, like my nine-year-old daughter asking if she can have friends over, because we want cool people to come, but she hasn't cleaned her room. And so I tell her, clean your room. And I think we need to clean our city and make sure that we shore up our, in the next decade, we can be one of the best places to be in the entire Midwest. We can be a Silicon Valley. We're not ready for that. We have to take care of those things today.
Thank you, Erin. Mark Patazawa.
I think of economic development as creating an environment where business can grow, which means more jobs, better paying jobs and better economic output for everybody. One of the things that, we have to be able to make it easier to get into business and to stay into business in Manhattan. I keep harping about the regulations and the code service issues that they've got all the time. But all of those things drive up the cost of business, which means there's less profit for paying wages. And so we have to really be careful as we start trying to make everything neater and niftier in Manhattan, that we don't have the unintended consequence of driving up the price of everything, the price for people to live here, the price of business to do business here. I think the city's responsibility is we've got to be able to keep some money or have some money on hand for potential employers or some local employer wants to expand and especially for things like some kind of an infrastructure improvement. That's one of the things that we would not probably have budgeted, but if they need a rail spur or a four-lane highway that goes a half a mile or something, those might be the kind of things that would be nice to have some economic development money sitting there waiting for some kind of use instead of saying, oh, we can't afford that and now we're out of business.
Okay, Caleb James.
For me, when it comes to economic development funds for the city, they need to do three things. Number one, it needs to help pay down the city debt so that we can get out from under that and stop having to raise taxes to get additional funds. Number two, it needs to entice businesses to create jobs that number one, pay well and number two, have benefits. It's one thing to make $15 an hour if you have benefits and come out of that 15, it is another thing entirely to have to take your benefits out of that $15. So we need to be very introspective when we look at where we use economic development funds when it comes to bringing businesses. The third thing is to increase the quality of life of the residents that are here. We want to bring in businesses, not necessarily the workforce. The workforce is here. We have workforce producer in MATC and Kansas State University. We can produce a workforce, we have to produce a city that that workforce wants to live in. So when we look at funding quality of life projects, we need to look at, are we making our communities healthier? Is there more things for them to do to get outside? When we talk about, for me, one of my topics is the Douglas Center, we're talking about that area and that community. Where else are they going to go if they don't have the Ata Bus to live downtown or go to another location? Where are they going to work out? I talk to a lot of the high school kids, I don't just talk to voters. They say they want to go down there and play basketball and they say, oh, the place is falling apart. City doesn't care. That's their mindset when they're growing. City doesn't care. We need to use economic development funds to do that thing. And actually, a commissioner recommended using economic development funds to build the Douglas Center and it was shot down.
Thank you, Caleb. Linda Morse.
With regard to the definition of economic development, I agree that it is creating an environment for businesses to grow and create better jobs and better paid for jobs. We have one experience with, or two, with call centers and that didn't work out so well. We're kind of glad when they left. We currently contract, the city currently contracts with the Chamber of Commerce to vet the applications for economic development that we receive. I think that's a good idea. And I say that because the city does not have the expertise to do that. There's not one staff member that could do that totally. Plus, after a private company gives their financial information to the city, it's available to the public through a Freedom of Information Act. No company is going to do that. We have a fine line we have to walk and commissioners, staff, administration are not experts in that area. We have, anyway, I'm not a big advocate of paying down debt. I think economic development needs to be used for future thinking things and not for looking back and that's paying debt down. So it's just a philosophy. We don't have that much money, but when I look at how much money Topeka has, they make $20 million offers to companies to come in. We aren't in their league.
Thank you, Linda. Maureen Chahan.
Economic development, I think they've done a pretty good job of defining it, finding ways to enhance the city, the number of jobs, the availability of jobs, the number of jobs that are well-paying. If we're going to give money to a business to come here, we need to ensure that that business is going to bring jobs that every one of those provides, every single job provides enough money that a person can live a dignified life. We can't, the city, the Chamber of Commerce came and asked for more money and they said if we gave them more money, they would bring in 500 jobs, $40,000 a year jobs over the next five years. My question to them would be, how many additional jobs would be minimum wage, part-time jobs that put a drain on the rest of the system? It's not necessarily that we need more jobs, but we need to find ways to increase the pay for the jobs that we have so that people can live a dignified life on the, doing the work that they're doing.
Thank you. Mary Renee Shirk.
Economic development funds are money that you and I pay through a tax that we have that expires in two years and so it's our money. And I believe economic development is about, like folks have said, about growing business here. I would like to make sure that we're spending as much supporting and helping the businesses that are already here as we are spending money trying to recruit people from out of town. I feel like a lot of our shift has been towards, let's recruit, let's recruit, let's recruit. And we have some great employers here in town who do in fact pay a living wage and provide healthcare and I think that's important. I do feel like any money the city invests needs to be literally concrete. It should be infrastructure, it should be solid things that if that business fails, we can still use for other businesses. Also, a large part of it is I would like the city to look back at some of our failures, like the call center, and let's make sure we've learned from those as we go forward to spend that money. I'm a big supporter of making sure, like lots of folks have said, that businesses we bring in pay enough and provide healthcare. Why would we bring in a business that's then going to cost us more in a different area of the town? And one of my big pet peeves is we built all of those, I call it Heart Attack Lane, the street that's fast food lane that has all those fast foods and we built all those stores and there's no sidewalks for those workers to get there. And we wonder why we can't get workers. So making sure we're providing for workers not only by providing a wage, but making sure they can get there and making sure we have the childcare available to do that. Does this business bring work and life to all of us and is it worth our money?
Thank you, Mary Renee. Sarah Siders.
I think most of us have realized that economic development can be defined as whatever I want it to mean, whatever you want it to mean, and therefore we've spent that money from that sales tax on many different kinds of things and it does depend on philosophy. I believe that it's less about what economic development is and more about what it should do. I think it should promote prosperity, opportunity and sustainability in a community. And I think that that is done through making it easier to live, work and play in Manhattan, both for our current and for our future residents. So that looks like supporting and promoting not only entrepreneurship, those who are here in the community that might have a business idea, those coming in from the outside who might want to, you know, bring their business here, but also supporting the business community here in Manhattan. I've been a part of One Million Cups. It's been really neat to be a part of that community and the network of people who are wanting to make business great here. Initiatives like Start MHK are great examples of promoting business and entrepreneurship, but I think it's also about attracting our workforce and making sure that we're doing what it takes to make it easier, again, to live here through everything from improved multimodal transportation, you know, I need to be able to walk or bike or use public transportation here. And I think all of those things, when we use our money for that, that also reflects a focus on economic development here.
Thank you, Sarah. Vincent Tracy.
Economic development shouldn't only be about bringing in new businesses. It should be used to promote those businesses that are already here, to help them to expand if at all possible and to help them to be able to provide the benefits their workers need in order to stay here. If we're not providing those benefits as part of their pay, we're not developing a good economic background to keep Manhattan viable. I have no other comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Vincent. Okay, we have a multi-part question, but it's all on one topic. What is your position on the proposed sales tax increase and what other forms of revenue raising would you consider besides sales tax, especially to support our infrastructure and social services?
Are you sure this person isn't running for commission? The sales tax question is a favorite for people to ask me and unfortunately, I have almost no power over if it passes or doesn't. What I do have power over is how I will work for you. And I see our commission, our school board, any nonpartisan board as somebody that is the employee of the voters, that you are the boss. If you decide we don't want this sales tax, it's my job to figure out how we do things to make it work within those parameters. And I think I've heard, we don't want increased property taxes. So if we don't, that that means a really not fun job for me as your commissioner to figure out where we find funding to pay for those important safety projects that we talked about earlier, including the levy, because that could be cuts to services, it could be cuts to other things. The other part of the question is, how do we shore up in other ways to tax? That could be, we, we've, in the past, we've talked about the transient tax, the guest tax. There's, there's ways to identify smaller sections of people that may be able to pay as they move through our community, but really, that is also the sales tax being pitched to us currently. So I myself think that it makes my life easier a little bit as a commissioner if the sales tax passes because we have ways to fund these projects that are important to the community, but I'm not running to make my life easier either. So I will work for you and work within those parameters as the community decides.
Okay, thank you. Erin. Mark Hattasaw.
Well, the question becomes, do you want to get socked every time you buy something at Dylan's, or would you rather get socked twice a year under property taxes? And so it's going to be an issue for people to decide. I would really like, part of the sell, the sale of the sales tax issue is, is over thirty years, we'll be able to generate the amount of money it costs to do these six projects. So my question is, are we going to sort of pay as we go and start with the highest priority ones, which apparently are the airport and the levy? And does that mean we got to wait twenty or twenty-five years for the Douglas Center to, for that cash to be freed up for that? Or are we going to borrow a pile of money and use the point-three percent sales tax to pay it back? I would really like for this to have had like a ten or some period of time sunset, do the most important, what they think are the most important projects, the levy and the airport, and then figure out where we can find some other money, some more federal grants, some more paying down some other debt, to free up some other money to, to start on some of these other projects, because that's, it just seems like if it's a thirty-year plan, we can't wait thirty years for all these projects if they're that important today. And so I'd like us to make it a ten-year thing, and then in ten more years, if the voters are satisfied that we've made progress on the list, then we can renew it again. But just this eternity tax increase is just a little hard to swallow, but it would make the budget easier. But like you said, we'll leave that for Bernie to make it easier.
Thank you. Caleb James.
Yes, so my issues with the sales tax increase, first and foremost, it's infinite. They just ask you to let them raise your tax forever. Then the second thing is, the commission didn't put any attachment on there, the city didn't put any attachment on there. The next commission can get in there and spend that money on whatever they want, because there is no guarantee that this money is going to be spent on these six things. It's just saying, we could pay for these six if you pass it. If you look at my card and my material I have over there, one of the things on there is accountability. The only reason I would be against this is because there's no accountability tied to it. How do we hold people accountable for something they never said they would do? Just something they said they could do if they wanted to. That's the main issue I have with this. Secondly, we need to look at holding the city staff accountable. Two commissioners, to their credit, Jared McKee and Boon Butler, said to the city, give us a version of the budget where the ta, property taxes do not increase. They asked for this three times. Zero times did the city staff give them that budget, and they both voted against it, and rightfully so. If the commission isn't holding the city staff accountable for your tax dollars, who's going to? And now they're asking for more taxes. Are you going to elect people who owe them accountable, or are you going to vote for the sales tax and then vote the same thing back in?
Thank you, Caleb. Lynda Morris.
I do support, as a commissioner, I voted to send this to the electorate at the upcoming election because it's a big bite to chew. But when you consider that point-three sales tax, point-three cents of a cent, is pretty marginal. And when I look at all of the cities in the state, Manhattan is right in the middle with the amount of sales tax that we charge. That means we're not being extreme. We're middle of the road, and that's where we need to be, for me to be comfortable. I think that these projects are essential. We have to do this levy. We have to do this airport runway. There, and I'm committed to doing the Douglas Center. My least or my lowest priority is the maintenance building. It's a million dollars. But there are other things that get slipped into our budget too, and I could talk about that, but I'm not interested in putting it on property taxes. I would rather have it out as sales tax. But there are other opportunities, like internet sales tax and pressuring our legislators, delinquent property taxes, getting, hoping, working with people to get them paid so the money is available and not out in the middle of nowhere. Dark store theory, where corporations keep their own money and get it back. Those are kind of unreasonable.
Maureen Shaheen.
I am not a big proponent of the sales tax increase primarily because it's a regressive tax. It impacts the people with the least, the people who don't have the dollars they save at the end of the month. Aren't going to have more stuff at the end of the month. They're just, they're going to pay the same amount of money and end up with less groceries at the end of the month. So that's the primary reason that I don't, I just, on the, things that need to be done, that need to be fixed. The levy we've already committed to, so we have to fund it. The airport, it needs to be done. It's not a huge amount of money, but we do need to have the money to do that. If, I agree with Caleb, that the, the sales tax increase does not have anything directly tied to it. It's like, there's some stuff that we want to do, and you should pay us. So we would need to set a process, a clear process, for deciding what gets done and what priority of it is. I heard a comment in one of the sales, in one of the, if the sales tax increase doesn't pass, we will have to look critically about how we proceed with this project. How about we look critically at how we proceed with each of the projects regardless of whether the sales tax passes or not?
Thank you, Maureen. Mary Renee Shur.
I'm kind of going to roll right off of that and say, if these are projects we have to do and we knew they were coming, why weren't we saving for them? I'm voting no on the sales tax, and I actually use the airport all the time. I'm voting no, and I'm actually in a neighborhood that would benefit from the Douglas Community Center. I'm voting no, and I live five blocks from Aggieville and do a lot of my living in Aggieville. And I'm voting no until the commission can commit to projects and until they can tell me they're planning on how to replace the runway the next time their runway needs to be replaced. I'm tired of feeling like we commit to projects, and then I feel like as a taxpayer, I'm told, now we must pay for them. And I ask, where is the planning for the next time? I've lived here twenty-five years, and so I've constantly seen people put things off and put things off with the, oh, we'll get a tax, we'll pay for that later, and we're tired of that. While we, within the city and the know, know the city's sales tax is just this percent, all of us have seen our property tax go up because of the schools and because of the county. We've also seen issues with the state. And so for all of us, it's all coming out of our pockets. And a lot of us, and this goes back to your presentation, feel like we weren't asked about these projects, that these projects weren't planned for, and more importantly for me, that there's not a plan to prevent us from having this in the future. But maybe it does take nine percent sales tax for us to have the city that we want to have in the future, but I think that's a discussion we didn't have. Instead, we found some projects, we cobbled them all together, and said, surely the city will pay for them.
Thank you, Mary Renee. Sarah Siders.
Would you mind repeating the question so I can make sure I'm answering it properly?
Yes. The question is, what is your position on the proposed sales tax increase, and what other forms of revenue raising would you consider besides sales tax, especially to support our infrastructure and social services?
So the sales tax, like everyone else, I feel somewhat conflicted about it. There's obviously these, these obvious negatives to it, that it is a regressive tax that negatively affects people with lower income. It's a no sunset tax, so it's sort of infinite. And again, as people have mentioned, the projects aren't earmarked, and so the commission is not necessarily committed to completing those. And so those would be some of the negatives. And ultimately, I'm not deciding this. We're all going to go into, you know, the voting booth on November fifth and make the decision at the exact same time, but I'm sort of letting you in on my inner workings here, thinking about the pros and cons. I think for the, the pros of this, of the sales tax specifically, funding these infrastructure and safety improvements, we really, we're partnering with federal dollars for the levy and for the airport, and I think that's an important commitment that we need to follow through on. And you can see how each of these projects would be important or even catalytic, like the parking garage that's going to open up room for development and live work and place space in Aggieville. I think a lot of those things are important and could, as Mary Renee said, help us create the city that we want to live in. But I think that it's important for us as city members and voters to hold ourselves and the city commission accountable for the choices that we make with this money.
Thank you, Sarah. Vincent Tracy.
As I've said previously, I don't like the way the sales tax initiative was wording. It doesn't stop. And it does, as everybody says, impact those people who have the least amount of spare money to be able to do things. But I've also taken a stand that I don't want to raise property taxes. It's been said by two commissioners that if, even if the sales tax initiative passes, there's a possibility that they would want to raise the mill levy by six more. Too much taxes. We've got to have a commission that's willing to say, stop. We've committed to this. We've got to find the funds to pay for it. We need to take care of those safety issues. And if I get elected to the commission, one of the first things I'm going to ask the rest of the commission in the city to do is go to the legislature and say, hey, let's modify your taxes so that people don't have to pay tax on food. In that way, they'll have more money out of the limited funds they get, not having to choose, do I pay this pay period for rent and utilities or do I buy food for my family? Thank you.
Thank you, Vincent. Next question. Please describe how you would work with the Riley County Police Department to improve public safety.
Awesome. So I, I, I really enjoyed the new director. I think he has a vision that I, I think aligns with mine, where I would hope we get to. It's not going to be easy to get there. I know, in talking to him, that the diversity of the police force is important to him, and I love to hear that. We have patrolmen that I think around the numbers of a hundred and five or a hundred and ten patrol officers, and ninety-nine of them are white. So that, and white males. So there's, there's, or maybe just white, sorry, I shouldn't say, which gender. But the, the issues that we have as a community is that, as Caleb mentioned, people are feeling left out, they're feeling not representative, they're feeling profiled in some circumstances, and maybe that's true, maybe it's not. But what we can do as a city is promote that vision and work with our director to make that happen, make it a reality. The way that they're working with mental health is a model of how they can be inclusive and have those crisis intervention teams, how they can have different, bring different people and different experts in to help those officers transition to be a more welcoming or more understanding force to serve everybody.
Thank you, Erin. Mark Hattasaw.
I was thinking several years ago that Captain Hagerty had come up with a plan where they, they were focusing most of their police efforts in the areas of town where most of the crime was occurring, because apparently, there's like two to three hundred people are committing pretty much all of the crimes in Manhattan. And so, and they're almost seventy-five or eighty percent of them are all drug-driven, whether it's people breaking into cars to steal money for drugs, whether it's somebody killing somebody else because of disagreement over money for drugs. And so the drug problem is the big driver of crime in our community, and we need to sit real hard on the people that are the repeat offenders. I was talking to a parole officer the other day, and she says that it's given to me a joke, they just, they don't, they don't have room in the jail, or they just, they send everybody out on, on bail, and then they put them on parole, and then they're constantly watching them, and then they're constantly getting into trouble. But the state's systems are overcrowded. Apparently, our local one doesn't, can't hold many more, so it's a revolving door, and we're not ever fixing it. So how do we work with that to make it better? I don't know. We've got to get, we've got to start locking up the serious criminals. People, you can avoid most crime if you're not involved with criminals. If you're not a drug dealer, you're not hanging out with bad guys, there's a pretty good chance that you're not going to be the victim of a crime. And so I think with, drugs are the main problem, but we've got to focus on the few criminals that are out there that are causing most of the problem.
Thank you, Mark. Caleb James.
Yes, first and foremost, I think you have to let police officers do their jobs. I have a friend of mine, I'm not going to mention his name because I didn't ask him to be able to, but he was a soldier of mine when I was in the Army. He got out and stayed around here as well. And he's currently a member of the R C P D, and he's a great guy. And so, yes, I would like to see more diversity in the workforce, in the police force, but I would also like to see that cultural awareness happen. I would like to see more community engagement. And I think the commission's portion is to be able to be that hand that extends from the R C P D to the community and help be that buffer. There's an outdoor basketball court over by the Douglas Center, and some kids were playing out there, and I went to join them. I said, man, you need to get some more friends out here so we can do five-on-five. And they said, nah, man, if we get too many of us over here, the police be on our bumper. I said, what? And they said, yeah, man, too many of us in the group, police gonna be here in about ten minutes. That's where the city commission can help, to be that buffer, because I told them, look, a lot of good guys on the police force. I said, if you guys are out here having fun, there's no reason you should feel like the police are going to show up because you're in too big of a group. So when you're asking what the city commission can do to assist that, it's be the buffer, be the outreach from the community to the police force, and then also help the nickel police to do their job and not have that stigma and perception in the community.
Thank you, Caleb. Lynda Morris.
Since January, I've been serving on the Riley County Law Board, and that's been an educational piece for me so far. But it involves asking hard questions and looking at their budget critically, which is what we did this year. But I believe that the new director is changing things, the culture in the Riley County Police Department. At least, I, I see that. I don't know that everyone does. I hope, I think he's doing the right things internally by talking to the personnel. I, I don't think that we behave reasonably, like locking our doors, locking our cars. I think we have a reasonably safe community here. I don't live in fear every day. I doubt that you do either. So we have to be reasonable about this also. With regard to diversity, I have seen the, since he has been here, he has promoted a woman to one of the higher level positions, administrator, and he's improving the race numbers also. I'm encouraged by that. He sees it as a need. I know that they're, he's begun a training program for, for police officers in how to handle, better handle mental health issues with, with, and rest. I, I believe he is doing some things with community engagement. He's only been here since January, so I think there's more to be done.
Thank you, Lynda. Maureen Shaheen.
I agree. I think that, that the new director is doing a good job, how would I work with the R C P D. I am a member of the Equal Justice Alliance, and we've met with, with Director Butler. Every time I see him, he says, well, are we having another meeting? So I think he is, really is engaged. And I, I think, I saw on Facebook the other day, they had a, how, for autistic people to come and meet with police and say, how do you behave when you're in a traffic stop? How do you behave when you're around the police? How do the police behave with the autistic people? So they would actually know, maybe if you've never met an autistic person, you wouldn't understand how they behave that might be different than a standard person, you know? So that kind of outreach, I think, is, is really good, and I would do everything I could to encourage more things like that, maybe coffee with a cop, where you can get together. together on a Saturday morning and meet the officers that patrol your neighborhood, or, you know, anything like that. Anytime that we can have more interfacing with the police officers that is not crime-related, I think that's a good thing. Regarding crime in the neighborhood, I looked at the map of large, of crime in Manhattan the other day, and basically, there was larceny everywhere. It's not restricted to one part of town. It's all over the place. So, they're dealing with a lot of issues, and I think they're doing a good job.
Thank you, Maureen. Mary Renee Schur.
Could you repeat the question? I need to make sure I answer the right question.
Please describe how you would work with the Riley County Police Department to improve public safety?
Those of us who've been involved with the Riley County Police Department before, in one way or another, be it pleasant or unpleasant, have our own feelings about the Riley County Police Department. One of the reasons I'm running, honestly, is because a friend of mine who was, was involved with the police in a way, in a domestic institute, she said, "You know, I feel like no one there's ever been in the backseat of a cop car before, and yet they're making decisions about the police." And so, again, I feel that citizen representation, getting people to talk about their experiences with the police, and creating a safe space for them to have those discussions, not just a person at the police department, but as a city commissioner who can come and talk to those folks. There are racial discrepancies in our arrest records here in town. I can give you all those numbers if you'd like, so we do have some issues here. I have some friends that live in the county, and they also fund the RCPD, and they say, "You know, I never see a cop." And I said, "I live by Aggieville. Come on down to my neighborhood. We're hogging them all in a 12-block, two-block area down there." So, I think there is some needed discussion to go on. I was very happy to meet with the LGBT liaison that they've created there to help other folks who may feel marginalized and let them feel like they have a safe space with RCPD. I think expanding the mental health and making sure that we're mental health-supporting our police officers. Those folks see some bad stuff every day. Every day is someone else's worst day, and I think making sure we continue to support them is also really important.
Thank you, Mary Renee. Sarah Siders.
Yeah, I think RCPD is doing a great job, and I got to meet the new director as well, and have been very impressed so far with his philosophies and initiatives. I think that ultimately, when it comes to law enforcement, we want to, we want to take care of the people who are actually doing the work of law enforcement. I do know some people who are police officers, and they, they have such incredible jobs and take such risks and make sacrifices all the time. I think that's very important. And with that being said, I think that there's also a sense of low trust within certain populations in our community between the law enforcement and minority populations or marginalized populations. And so, when, I mean, many people along the forum here, I've already mentioned this, but we need to be having intentional conversations and creating safe places to, to humanize people, because why, why is someone using, using drugs, right? Even, even that idea, sometimes we talk about, you know, criminals as if they're not people, and I think we need to remember that everyone is a person, and so, we need to think about, why is somebody doing something that seems so less than human? And we, when we look at the bigger picture, we want to be thinking about how to promote holistic health, everything from affordable housing, you know, expanding healthcare opportunities at the state level. You know, we need to be addressing food insecurity in critical ways, and, and just taking a look at the whole picture that contributes to crime in our community.
Thank you, Sarah. Vincent Tracy.
Well, first things first, I'm looking at this with a skewed perspective. I spent 20 years in law enforcement. I've seen a lot of other people's bad days. But what can we, as the City Commission, do to work with Riley County PD? We have to work through the Law Board. We can't work directly with the police department. We can ask the director, "What problems is he having?" We can have meetings with the officers in both correction and patrol and admin and see what issues they're having. Some of their issues, we're not going to be able to address, but we might be able to come up with some ideas that the Law Board could take on to make it easier for some of their personnel. In talking with the Fraternal Order of Police, one of their issues is, it doesn't matter where you're at, everybody gets the same pay increase regardless of whether or not they're the ones out in the street having to deal with everybody else's bad days. Maybe we can get the Law Board to look at different items, but that's for future commission.
Thank you, Vincent. Okay, the next and last question from the audience, and I'm going to ask the timers, we're going to make this a lightning round where you just get one minute to answer so we can stay on track timewise. The question is, what do you feel the commission's role is in assuring necessary social services have the resources they need to effectively care for those they serve?
The City Commission's role is to be a listener, hear the concerns, and then make sure that the people, and from my perspective, the people are being provided access to those resources so they can either get out of the situation they're in or climb the ladder to reach that American dream. I've worked as a case manager for homeless veterans. That's what I did when I got out of the military. I helped in identifying that we had a lack of resources pooling together in our community. We organized Everybody Counts as an event to do that. I worked with the churches. I think there's lots of partners in our community. We're a generous community. We've developed the FIT Closet to help with students in our schools that are homeless. We need to pull that together, identify needs, remove the stigma of asking for help, and give that help. My goal, pretty much my goal in life is to connect the people that have more than enough with the people that want it, that need it, and I will, I'll continue that mission as your commissioner.
Thank you, Aaron. Mark Hattasaw.
As I stated before, I was on the Social Service Advisory Board, and I've always been a big supporter of the social services. You talked about on the Facebook Live thing the other night, the idea of putting like a dedicated one-mill or something budgeted every year for the social service agencies, and, and I would be in favor of a number. I don't think it would be necessarily a full mill, but figure out what it was this year, .7, .75, what it might be, and kind of plan on that. That way, the agencies will have some idea of what might be available, and then the Social Service Board would have a target of what, what number to kind of stay in. And so, when, when they don't really know how much the commission might approve, they don't necessarily know what numbers to offer them, but I think it is one of those things where, charity starts at home, and I would like the churches to pick up more of the charity, and it's been nice that the churches that are providing meals, every night of the week, you can get a free hot meal here in town, and so, that's a good start. We need to encourage that.
Thank you, Mark. Caleb James.
Yes, so, I would be for setting aside a mill every budget session. That's $585,000. That would be about $34,000 more than the city contributed from the general fund this year, and say that that goes to social services every year. Also, what I would like to do is whenever somebody applies for the social services funds, I'd like to do an evaluation of past efficiencies, not only an evaluation, but an audit, and see, is there another way we can increase efficiency of the services you are providing, and do we have like services where we might join your efforts and increase our efficiency as well so that the money can reach a greater population, or you can do more with the money that you have? It's not all about just throwing dollars at it, but making sure that those dollars you do put towards it are invested in an efficient program that helps as many people as possible.
Thank you, Caleb. Lynda Morris.
I think it is entirely reasonable for our community to set aside a small percent of our total budget for social services, and those are the ones that help the least able to provide for themselves. I'm most familiar with the Crisis Center and the Homeless Shelter and Thrive, but I'm also just attend the Common Table meetings for those meals that are at night, because I have a passion for that. I'm not interested in a cap, because I've seen what a tax lift has done to our state and our, meaning our cities and counties. I think that we have to be able to respond to a disaster if one comes along. We aren't just floating out here. We have to, and, and I think that our city processes have done a reasonable job of holding that total amount down. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynda. Maureen Shaheen.
The City Commission's role is to ensure that the basic services are provided. We need to make sure that we are funding. I think the Social Services Advisory Board does a good job. I'm not in favor of a firm cap, because we don't know what will happen in the future. We don't know if someone will come up with a really good program, but, oh, well, we can't quite fund you, because we have a cap, and we've already met it this year. So, we need flexibility in the ability to fund social services. I, I think that the services that we're providing now are doing a good job, but I would like to see some increases. But I agree with Caleb, that we need to look for efficiencies and ensure that the people getting money are using it wisely.
Thank you, Maureen. Mary Renee Schur.
I think we should ensure that everything we fund is spending their money wisely, and I wouldn't want us to apply that more to social services than we do to RCPD or anyone else. I would also like to shift this thinking of social services as charity. This is providing services to people in our community who pay taxes. These are the kind of services that enabled my husband and I to raise four children and buy a house, and now provide a lot of taxes back to this community. So, these social services are important. I am not in favor of a cap of any kind, because they serve all of us. They serve all of us, and I don't like the idea that we'd be holding them to a higher standard or holding them to a cap anymore, like I said, than we would cap any other service like the police here in town. We do, the churches in this area do a lot of things, and I'm very thankful for Common Table and for all of the food pantries available in town. There are folks who don't want to have to go to churches to get the services they need, and that's where the city comes in, and that's where that money comes in.
Thank you, Mary Renee. Sarah Siders.
I think that the City Commission has an important role in supporting social services, but it's not that we are simply here to fund the entire organization. The city actually doesn't support any organization fully, so no, no nonprofit is coming to the commission for their full budget, right? So, what are we funding social services for? We're doing that because we want to be able to make an investment in our community, because we believe in social responsibility. We're doing it because we want to be able to have influence in how that money is being spent and help support and promote accountability at those nonprofit levels. And so, we're looking at some of, with the SSAB, we're saying, "Hey, we think these nonprofits are having some of the biggest impacts here in our community, and we want to continue to support that." That being said, to ensure that they have the proper resources, I think we can be looking at promoting community partnerships, you know, looking at how faith communities are supporting those services as well, and also looking at if there's any, you know, duplication of services, we need to make sure that that's not happening to the best of our ability.
Thank you, Sarah. Vincent Tracy.
I get to be the bad guy. I'm in favor of a one-mill cap, not an additional one-mill, but one-mill out of the existing budget. And the reason for that is, that gives the Social Services Advisory Board a number to shoot for, and they are the ones who have to determine which one of the social services get how much money. It's not the City Commission. We're not here to fund everything. We're here to help those agencies that are helping us and our citizens to have a better life, but we're not an endless pocket of money. Otherwise, we wouldn't be up here telling you we want to hold down taxes.
Thank you, Vincent. Okay, we're going on to closing statements, and I'm going to go a little out of order. I'm going to let Mark Hattasaw go first, because he has a prior engagement he needs to get to.
As a former mayor and commissioner, I learned quickly on the commission that being a good commissioner isn't a popularity contest. As you look out across the audience some nights, and you've got friends on both sides of the aisle and both sides of the issue, it gets kind of queasy pretty quickly there. So, as we went through the downtown redevelopment, we had to make a lot of tough decisions, and it wasn't always popular, but I always slept well at night, because I knew that I was following what I felt was right. And so, people of integrity expect that to be believed when they tell people something, and then they let time prove them right. And I, I think I did a pretty good job the first time around for six years on the commission. I think in retrospect, I wasn't as bad as some of you thought I was, but I think I did a pretty good job, and I think I would do a pretty good job moving forward. I'd appreciate your vote, and thanks for being here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Aaron Estabrik, closing statements.
I want to thank everyone for caring about the future of Manhattan, and there's a full crowd for those listening. There's, there's almost no seats available, and that's great. That shows people do care about the future of our city, and I'm, I'm happy you're here on this Sunday afternoon. As I said earlier, my work at Job Corps this last year has inspired me and strengthened my resolve in the station, in the, the idea that the station you're born into does not dictate the height of your potential. I believe that what Man, that, I believe that is what Manhattan represents to a lot of people. For me, as a young boy living in, on a small hog farm in southwest Kansas, it was a special event to go to Manhattan. The trees are, the trees were green, there was excitement and possibility in the air. Manhattan is not a stepping stone to a better place. It is the better place, and as your commissioner, I want to keep that dream alive. I believe we have opportunities in the next decade to strengthen our infrastructure, address our deferred maintenance, and provide quality of place that will last a generation. The next commission is going to need to be fiscally responsible, capable of managing expectations, and not get distracted from the strengths we already have as a city. I'm asking for your vote, because I'm willing to do the hard work necessary to make Manhattan stronger.
Thank you, Aaron. Caleb James.
All right, well, I'm asking for your vote, so that we can get these property taxes under control, so we can balance the budget, and so that you will have a commission that is accountable to you, the people who elected you. One thing that separates me from some of the people running is that I'm not just going to sit here and tell you I'm for something. I'm going to be about what I tell you I'm for. A lot of people mention Northview. I haven't missed a meeting of their group, the Northview Rising Group, in the last three months. When they talk to you about affordable housing, the renters together, I haven't missed a meeting. I'm there, and I'm diametrically opposed to some of the ideas that come out of these meetings, but I tell them, "I'm willing to hear you. I'm willing to negotiate with you, compromise, and find a ground, because I believe that housing should be affordable. Now, let's compromise on that path to affordable housing." I agree with you that your neighborhood isn't the safest. That might not be the answer. Let's compromise. Maybe I have to give little, you have to give little. I'm willing to do the work. My beautiful wife is in the back, and she watches our small children when I go to these meetings. After, she watches them all day while I'm at work, and she's willing to make those sacrifices, because we love Manhattan that much. So, what I promise you that I will do is continue to attend meetings, continue to hear people, continue to show up for coffee, and continue to be consistent, and I'm asking you not only to vote for me, but after you vote for me, hold me accountable. Write down what I'm telling you I will do, and the moment that I don't, blast me on social media, send me the emails, WIVW. I, I don't mind. I will be consistent in what I'm telling you that I will do, and I will make sure that you all are a priority to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb James. Lynda Morris.
Thank you for coming today, and thank the League and AAUW and
K-Man.
And K-Man for, for hosting this today. It's important that we hear each other, listen to each other. I am a Navy Kansan. I've lived here for over 40 years. I raised, my husband passed away, I'm a widow. He passed away 20 years ago. I have two grown children, neither of whom stay. I am, have been passionate about this community. I have participated in any number of boards, the League Board for a number of years even, the Urban Area Planning Board, lots of boards. I believe I know this community well. I think, I would call it, I'm intimately familiar with the community. I believe that I have worked hard. I have attended meetings, you know, meeting after meeting, but I have a passion for doing that. I even adopt a few boards, because I want to know more about what's happening at the Parks and Rec and the Historic Resources Board, and so, Common Table, some of those boards, and so I can be closer to the community. And I, I would like the opportunity to serve another time. I think that I'm just seeking one more term, and would like to have the opportunity again. This is important work, and I don't want to leave it to people that are going to just take a knife and whack at it. We've got to have reasonable people in charge of our government.
Thank you, Lynda Morris. Maureen Shaheen.
Thank you all for being here. I'm Maureen Shaheen. I am asking for your vote. I am not a politician, I'm not a public speaker. I tend to be the person in the back handing out the cookies or putting away the chairs. I am a listener. That's, that's my greatest strength, is I That's, that's my greatest strength, is I listen to people. I synthesize ideas. I listen to what people bring to the table, what they want, and then try to look for ways to make everything work to the best of our ability. I heard one person say, I believe it was a county commissioner, said, "This was all a lot easier when I was talking with my coffee buddies." I, I don't have any illusions that it's, that it's easy. I am sure that city commissioners have to disappoint people on a regular basis. It's, what do they say, a good compromise is someone where nobody's happy? A lot of times, there's not going to be anybody happy, but the city commission is responsible for a lot of things, and they have to do what's best, they believe best for the community at, at large. So, my goal would be to speak for the people who feel they haven't been spoken for, to consider the needs of the underserved communities, to ensure that the janitors and the secretaries and the people fixing your food are able to live here and to able to live a dignified life in this community. And that will include increasing some services, increasing and maybe decreasing others. But it'll take a lot of balance and a lot of hard work, and I'm not opposed to either of those.
Thank you, Maureen Shaheen. Mary Renee Schur.
Thanks for coming out on a sunny afternoon on a beautiful day in Kansas, and we know we don't get many of those, and I do appreciate it. And I'm so happy to see so many people here. I want to make sure that you understand that I'll represent you all, as well as all of those who aren't here. And that's really why I'm running. I'm running for the janitors and the secretaries, the folks who can't make 7:00 PM meetings, the folks who don't have friends in well-connected places, and the folks who do most of the working in this town, and most of the taxpaying in this town. I'm a communicator by birth. And what, I'm, I'm social media savvy and media savvy, and I feel like in this day and age, if a commissioner isn't able to communicate with their constituents, they're not doing their job. And so, I vow to communicate with you more, to go to more meetings, but to also be on social media more, be available more by email, be available more in different places so that I can hear about people and how they're getting along and how they're dealing with the taxes, and are they willing to pay a little more to get a better sidewalk or to get a bus stop in front of their house? I initially started running partly because the added bus needs benches at the bus stops. And I realized it's one of those little things that we think about. Other people say, "I want the fireworks to come back," or "I want the pool to stay open later." And I think sometimes in these forums, we focus on these really big issues, and we forget that for a lot of people who love Manhattan, it's really about the little things. It's about sidewalks in front of their houses. It's about making sure if they need an outfit, they can go to their career closet and get one. It's also about having a realistic vision of what Manhattan is. I'm going to give you a heads up, college students don't have money anymore. We can't count on them as an economic base. And when they graduate, they've got a lot of student loans, they're not buying houses. The military has changed in twenty years. There's not a lot of them here. So, we need to focus on who is here, who is paying taxes, and what we need for the future. I want to represent all of you and your friends and neighbors who aren't here as well.
Thank you, Mary Renee. Sarah Siders.
Yeah, like everyone else, I am grateful for your presence here and thankful for your commitment and investment in our city. I'm running for city commission at this exact moment because I believe this is a pivotal time in our city's history. I think that we are making strategic and critical decisions for the future of our city, not even for one generation, but for multiple generations to come. And I think we're really at a hinge point, and we need to have certain leadership that is thoughtful and decisive, and that has a vision for the city that goes beyond even just the, the things that we're talking about right now, that, that matter to us right now, things like the levee, things like the parking garage. Those are physical manifestations of our, you know, investment in the city, but we want to be thinking about the kind of city that we want for our grandkids. And would, would our grandkids stay here, right? Would our great-great-grandkids be here? And so, that's the kind of city and the kind of sustainability and longevity that I'm wanting to build. I think we have a unique opportunity here in Manhattan because we can't expand infinitely out to the east and west and north and south. We have these barriers with the, the sound barrier from Fort Riley and the rivers, and I think that actually makes us sort of this boutique town where we can say, "What kind of town do we want to be? What kind of city do we want to be? Who are we?" The, the people that are here, as Mary Renee always talks about, who are we as a community, and what kind of city do we want to build for the future? And I think that strategic growth looks, promotes sustainability. We don't want to just say, "Hey, we want everyone, and we'll take anyone we can get." We want to say, "Hey, do you fit our vision? Do you fit who we are as a city?" Because we are a great, great city, and we want to invite specifically the kinds of people that we want. And I think that does involve attracting and retaining our young professionals, knowing who they are and what they want, and attracting and supporting our current businesses and the other businesses who call, whom I call Manhattan home.
Thank you, Sarah. Vincent Tracy.
I've been known in the last forty years for if I say I'm going to do something, I'm going to do it. And I do it because it's the right thing to do, not because it's going to make somebody happier, make a special interest group feel better. It's the right thing for the citizens especially. I'm not here to represent individuals. I'm here to represent the whole city. And I'd appreciate if you would vote for me so that we can keep our property taxes as something we can afford, and that we can provide those services that are needed, not just the ones that are wanted. More important way, I'd ask you, if you haven't already registered to vote, do so. Your voice won't count if you don't go into that ballot booth and cast your vote. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, Vincent. So, I want to thank all of our candidates for being here today and answering all of our questions, and thank the audience for coming. We do have a great audience here, and thank you to our K-Man listeners as well. I want to let everyone know that the League has a website called vote411.org where it has various issues and such that many or all of these candidates have, have said what their positions are on. So, if you want to go to vote411.org, you can find out more about these, these candidates' positions on issues that may be important to you. And I also encourage you to visit the League of Women Voters of Manhattan, Riley County website. And if you'd like to take a fun quiz about voting and the Nineteenth Amendment, which is celebrating its centennial this next year, you can take a fun little quiz on the League's Facebook and Twitter pages. So, for now, we will take about a thirteen-minute break, and we will be back and ready for the school board session starting at 3:45.